We're going to call the Big Lake School Board meeting to orders. Show that all board members are present except for Mr. Nelson. First, we need a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Sixberry. Second by Brown. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Did we have any open forum? Okay. Since we have no open forum, we're moving forward with the consent agenda. The previous minutes from the February 26 regular board meeting, the February 26 work session, and the March 12 work session, claims and accounts in the amount of $1,570,235.07 and seven cents, the credit card report, personnel, fundraisers, the memorandum of understandings, and the approval of those one-read policies that are listed.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda items.
Motion made by Chevillian, second by Sixberry. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Onto donations. I will make a motion to approve the donations. Second by Brown. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Financial report, Angie.
There. Now you can hear me, right? Good evening. So, school board financial report tonight. I will go over enrollment as usual, and then I actually did a spring budget revision. So there's a lot of information in here, so I'll try to summarize this for the board so you can understand it. So, first about enrollment. More good news. I feel like I'm a broken record, but that's good because it's good news every month. We did have an increase of enrollment. Actually, this month, from February to March, it was growth at Liberty. Actually, I have some extra or additional students there. Our average ADM is now 3,128. It's 11 ADMs over our re- because remember, I revised the enrollment budget back last fall. And so with this budget revision, which I'll go over, I actually adjusted gen ed aid again for our growth that has occurred during this school year. So, as John shows there, as John scrolls to that, you can see that graphically. So what I'll do next month is I'll adjust that yellow bar up because we've adjusted that budget. But it's such good news because I think when I was looking at this, our enrollment, we're now back to our enrollment level of two years ago. So this is just great news. And we hope that continues. So, as for the budget revision, this slide actually looks very similar to what I had done back in November. So I basically kind of went through, I called all the major accounts. Look at gen ed aid. As I mentioned, that was adjusted based on enrollment. Our special education aid now has been updated. Normally, I have to wait till April to do that, but the state has come out with a revised model as well as last year's results, and as well as I had updated information from the co-op. So I actually was able to update that actually a month earlier than I normally do. And that was positive results, increase in special ed aid. Just other state aids, grant estimates, just updated everything for things we know now. The other thing I wanted to mention is investment earnings. Last fall, we were projecting the feds to cut rates, and they actually have now. I think the latest meeting is they're on pause. And so our investment, our earnings are more because we're getting a higher average interest rate. So I adjusted based on basically what we know now. And that's been significant, the investment earnings. You know, just even a few years ago, we weren't earning anything because rates were so low. So, and that's been a significant part of our budget. Just updated other miscellaneous revenues, and then community service also updated. Stephanie looked at her budget and updated for known changes in program enrollment and expenses. So it's on the revenue side, expense side, very similar. The staff revision, you know, we had adjusted salaries for known hires in the last fall, but then we had open enrollment for benefits in January. So updated that based on the open enrollment changes. Did decrease transportation because we did have one snow day. And that's actually like a $42,000 savings, so just for the one day. And then, what I also wanted to highlight, REACT funding. We got, so there's two pots of money, one-time money, but we're not going to spend it all this year. So I had the entire amount in our budget, and I didn't want that to skew our information. So I carried forward it into the next year. And then there, now there's two new reserve fund balances, and that's required by law because we have to spend it just on REACT funding eligible items. See tuition estimates, grant estimates, yeah, same as the revenues. Then the expenses, you got to take a look at them as well as community service. So, general fund. Mainly in revenues increased quite a bit. And it's, as I mentioned, the federal, actually state special education as well as federal education aid. Special education aid, what I wanted to mention is, is we've been discussing how to maximize the federal special education aid in comparison to how it interacts with state special education aid. And so, one change we're making that I have never done, but I'm convinced this is the best way to do it, is we are now using some of that federal funding to pay some of our tuition bills to other districts. Then we can maximize what we're getting in state special education. It's a complicated formula, and I'll leave it at that. But if you do have any specific questions, you know, just give me a call or something. But we've had like two or three business manager meetings about it. And then expenditures, like I said, only decreased slightly, and that mainly was because of that snow day. And then I talked about the REACT allocation to next year. So bottom line, what you want to know is where's our unassigned fund balance? And so 9.4 million, it is 23% of unassigned expenditures. Previously, it was at 22%. And just a reminder, our fund balance policy is 9% to 12% of those unassigned expenditures. And then community service fund, basically what I said before, investment earnings, staffing costs. Community services fund balance did decrease, 101,494. And also, when you look at the components of the community service fund balance, the school readiness fund balance is negative due to, there's just not enough funding from the state to support preschool programming. So essentially, like the community service fund balance has to subsidize that program, if that makes sense. Other funds, just small changes, again, investment earnings, again, food service, debt service, and same with the OPEB trust. And then OPEB trust, we've got a little bit more of the investment advisory expenses, so I just up that budget to reflect what's actually happening. So bottom line is, this is the report you see every month. And let's see if I can point out that there's those two new fund balances. It's under, boy, about middle of the page, under literacy. You see literacy, okay, let me back up. There's three components. There's like three literacy buckets of money now. There's the ongoing, yeah, thanks, John. Yeah, keep going. Keep going. There you go. So literacy aid, literacy incentive aid, that's the ongoing funding we've always been getting. Literacy aid, REACT, one-time money, and then REACT training, one-time money. But any amount that we don't spend, like you see the revenue, we already got the revenue. We're only projected to expend the $75,000. And then, so then the fund balance goes forward then to next year. And as far as I know, there's no timeline on when we have to spend it by, I don't think. But REACT, those REACT dollars. Yeah. Or 20? Oh, okay. Yeah, we got a couple of years to spend it yet then. Okay. Okay. And then, I also, you probably may have heard that the governor has come out with a revised budget. So I just got some highlights there. Not happy about that first bullet point, but five, he's proposing 5% reduction in sped transportation. That could be about, I calculated this, about a $75,000 hit. If that would go through. Yeah, I have $75,000 to $80,000 impact to Big Lake. Reducing the community education equalization aid. So the funding stays the same. It's just because they're going to decrease the aid, that's more in our taxpayers. So that's the impact of that proposal, is that instead of the state paying, our taxpayers pay. His proposal to cut private school funding does remain. Proposal to cut QCOM funding does remain. Now, I had here initially no additional funding for summer term unemployment, but I believe Tim corrected me on that. There, he is proposing, I think, one more year of funding.
30 million.
Yeah. 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 So we might get one more year. So I just, I had done this before. I found that out. So, so actually, he's proposing one more year of the summer term unemployment. That's a lot of information. Do you have any questions, comments? Otherwise, just to prove the financial report is normal, and then add the budget revisions I just reviewed.
Any questions for Angie?
I'll make a motion to approve the financial report.
Motion made by Chevillian. Second by Sixberry. Any other discussions? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
All right.
And LTC. Right, or WTC, Wright Tech, LTFM.
Sorry, I was going to keep going and forgot.
Okay. There you go.
Yeah. So this is the annual LTFM resolution for Wright Technical Center. So we levy on behalf of Wright Tech. And as you know, our plan will come before the board probably in June. But Wright Tech has to do theirs earlier because it has to go to each member district. And so the impact to Big Lake is, it's about, it's under that paragraph one there. 36,75583. That is actually about $2,500 less than last year. And mainly because our share actually went down. So the net effect of that is essentially then our taxpayers will save a little bit because our share actually has gone down. But this does, this does require approval by the school board. This will then go on our pay 20, let's see, we are going to do pay 26 levy. And I do recommend approval of this resolution because without the LTFM funding, Wright Tech, it's not good for them financially. So, because then they would have to use general fund dollars to do some, to do like some deferred maintenance expense costs. And they really should tap into the LTFM funding, so.
If our, so it's for 26, but if our shares go up, you know, if we have more enrollment next year, does that amount change, or is this like by year, like would that be?
It's yearly. It's yearly, and it depends, it's twofold. It depends on our total enrollment, and then it depends on our, no, sorry, I have that wrong, Tim. I think it depends on grades 10, 11, and 12 enrollment, and then total enrollment, and then participation. Yeah. Yeah. So that's how they allocate it.
Okay. And so that, is that something that would be revised off of this, or is it a year delayed? Like, is the, do they levy based off of like last year's numbers?
Yeah.
And then next year, they'll levy off of it?
Exactly.
I'll make a motion to approve the Wright Tech Center resolution for LTFM.
Motion made by Sixberry. Second by Brown. Any other discussion? Since the resolution, it's a roll call vote. Brown?
Oh.
Sorry. Okay. Nelson?
Aye.
Hancock?
Aye.
Reesner? Aye. Sixberry?
Aye.
Chevillian?
Aye.
Okay, the resolution passes, 6-0.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Angie.
Thanks, Angie.
MTSS update.
Good evening. I'm excited to update you on all the work we've been doing this year in regards to MTSS. We are in year three of our implementation, and next slide. So just to give kind of a very general overview of what MTSS is, it's a framework where we look at how can we most effectively and efficiently help students be successful, both academically and behaviorally. And so MTSS is that framework that MDE is very much sponsoring and supporting statewide. It's nationally recognized as being one of the most effective ways to have a school district make sure that our students are being successful. So that's what this framework is. So you might, kind of a visual might be helpful to think about with our district. We have so many different departments, so many different initiatives, so many different efforts, people working in different ways. Those are all those small arrows where the work of MTSS looks at how can we make sure that we're aligning all towards student success? So all of our efforts, we're having communication and understanding, and really thinking through all the different pieces of our district to make sure that, again, this is about efficiency because we're resource-based. How can we make sure that we're using all of the different pieces for student success? So that's just a visual to kind of help you understand kind of this framework. So like I said, we're in year three. So just kind of going through the different years, kind of starting small and making sure that our administration has a deep understanding of what MTSS is. And then that next year, looking at how can we increase that training and with more administrators as part of that training? And then looking at helping the staff understand what it is, that it's not a trend. It's really, like I said, MDE is heavily really supporting and encouraging districts around the state to incorporate this framework. And then this school year, though it says district-wide implementation, it's just two words, but yet that is huge. And as I'm working with others, coordinators around the state, some districts are just implementing MTSS in one of their buildings, or maybe just the elementary. Whereas Big Lake has said, this is effective. We've seen how, you know, the research says how effective it is. We want all in, and so this year's been a huge year for that. Part of helping us with that is the grant from MDE that we received. And so that's really helped us move this effort forward. So, in talking about MTSS, there's five components. So five pieces of when they've done research. If we can maximize ourselves in these five areas, this is what we need to have a really sustainable, effective system of school support, or student support for our school district. So those five are there. And what I'm going to do is now kind of break each one apart and give a couple of examples of how we've been using those five different components this year in the work that we've been doing. And they're not in any order, and there's no, all of them are equally important. Just like when you're, like with a recipe, you need all the ingredients, and not one is more important than the other, all are important. Same with MTSS. So the first one is infrastructure for continuous improvement. And a lot of this is, it talks about the foundation, making sure that we have the teams, the resources, the staff, to make sure that our implementation of MTSS, our system, is solid. And so these are some of the ways that we've been working at that this year. So in each school, we have a person that's designated an MTSS lead. And this was an additional piece to their full-time role. But we found that that's really effective, especially as we have the different teams, like you can see there, the district MTSS team. Each building has their own MTSS leadership team. And then each building has their intervention, so their MTSS tier-two, tier-three team. So that MTSS lead is on all of those teams to make sure that there's communication and understanding, sharing information, so there's alignment again. And then that second bullet, the coordinator, my position is helping with, kind of oversee the implementation.
Can you elaborate a little bit? What, who's on a tier-two, tier-three intervention team?
Sure. So each school looks a little bit different, but essentially, when we're talking about MTSS, there's three tiers. And when they talk about tier-one, that's what's happening in the classrooms for all students. So effective instruction and learning happening in all the classrooms. That's where we can maximize student success, is making sure that our classroom teachers are really equipped to do their job well. They, statistically, they say we should have 80% of our students doing really well at that tier-one. So then the tier-two is students more in small groups doing intervention. And then tier-three is more, even more intensified for students who are needing that additional support. So to your question, as far as the tier-two, tier-three team, each building has their MTSS lead as part of it. I'm part of it. We have our data integrationist. We have an admin from that building. And then we have some people, some representatives from the intervention, whether it's behavior interventions or academic interventions. So for behavior, be more counselors, dean, social workers. For academic intervention, this mainly reading interventionist on that team.
So there's like sub-teams within the tier-two and three teams?
So that tier-two, tier-three team, that's one team that meets almost weekly in many of the buildings. Looking at for students who are needing that extra dosage of an intervention, whether it's again academic or behavior, how are they doing? Are we seeing progress as we're meeting with them in small groups? Are there ways we need to adjust? Because we're progress monitoring them, and we're seeing that maybe these students are doing well, but we need to discuss some students who aren't responding as well to intervention? That's what that team does.
Okay. And so do those, so you kind of answered that. So that's, that team is looking at that group of students that's already within that tier-two or within that tier-three.
Exactly.
So to get pushed into that tier-two and pushed into that, so tier-three would be pushed in from tier-two, but to get pushed into tier-two from your general classroom, is that, you know, reaching out by the teacher? Is that the intervention team, like looking at data saying, oh, wait a minute, it looks like there's a problem in, you know, X classroom?
Right.
Or is it a combination of both?
Yeah. It's the latter. It's heavily looking at the data that we have. So when we do, like specifically our Fastbridge screener, we can see, that's our thermometer to see how are students doing. And so students who are showing that they're not meeting benchmark on the screener, then we take that data as well as other data to see, you know, as far as classroom participation and grades, as far as attendance, behavior, all those things. And so we look at the data from all of that, and then we see these are the students who we need to focus a little bit more on, who aren't being successful just in our general ed classroom. But then the data shows that we need to give them some extra support in different ways.
And then, I think you're going to touch on the involvement of the parent. But like at that point, what does that look like for the student? Like, so you have a student that needs that extra support, and the team's identified that. What does that look like for that student?
So it'll be, it's dependent on building. With elementaries, let's say if it's, if they're struggling with an academic, if we have an academic concern, then we'll do a diagnostic to see, okay, if they're struggling in reading, as an example, what part of reading or what component of reading are they struggling in? And then we will put them into an intervention small group that specifically has an intervention matching that student need. If it's behavior, then we might say, you know, at the high school, having a counselor or social worker reach out to that student and talk with them, meet with them to see kind of how they're feeling about school, their engagement, all those kinds of things to see how best to help them.
And then?
It looks a little bit different by school.
Are parents notified of this concern that the team has identified?
Yes. Yep. And especially with. Right. Yeah. Letting them, letting parents know that, you know, like at the elementaries, your student will be, you know, and it's important to know that like a tier-two or tier-three is in addition to tier-one. So if they're struggling in reading, we're not going to take them out of the reading class to do intervention. They're going to have their tier-one classroom reading time with their classroom teacher, and then have that additional time with, in a small group.
Thanks.
And then assessment, some of the things that we've been doing this year, both with the district level and building-level teams, we've been doing a self-assessment. So MDE has this metric where it shows us these 100 different, 100 different areas within MTSS to see how are we doing with the implementation? And so we're rating ourselves, and then based on that, then we'll know what our action steps are for. You know, in this, in this particular area, we're a little, we're showing that we need some improvement. So what's our, what's our action step to better be more successful in that area? So that's what we've been completing this year. And then as well as thinking about the different assessments that we're giving students, making sure that there's training for the staff of understanding how to give the assessment, making sure they understand why we're giving the assessment so that there's fidelity with our, with our results. Because we use those results for everything else, we need to make sure that it's very accurate. So that's assessment. Then connected with that is that database decision-making. We've done a lot of great work this year with EduClima. And looking at, so we, we get the different, the different pieces of information for our student. We have a lot of data, but how can we make sure that we're using it to change and alter our response to supporting students? And so EduClima really helps us in visual ways to see what students are struggling, what students are doing well, how are they doing well? Disregregating it into subgroups to see which groups are doing well versus others, again, to guide us in making sure that all of our students can be successful. So that's one piece. And then the other piece is another team that we've just more recently created called the MTSS Advisory Team. And like it says there, it's a team that can come together, that can do the research and kind of dive deep into MTSS and different pieces, maybe that we're working on with our action steps, and then bring that to the district MTSS leadership team and give recommendations and kind of guide our work district-wide. So those are a couple of things for that piece. And then for multi-layered practices and support, this is a lot of times when people think of MTSS, this is what they think of with those different tiers. So part of that is, again, training our staff of what is MTSS. And MDE has offered some great trainings this year that we've been a part of. Again, our, the work that we're doing is largely led, we're looking to MDE for guidance on implementing MTSS, and they're, so we're participating and connecting with them very often, which has been a great partnership for Big Lake and MDE. And then the other, the middle two, or I guess the rest of them, again, talking about those different tiers, making sure that when we have students in our general ed classrooms, that we're meeting the needs of the vast majority of our kids. Because we're resource-based, we need to make sure that we can have a solid foundation thinking about a house before we're putting a lot of work on the second floor, the third floor. We need to make sure that that foundation is solid. And so that's what we've been doing in different ways with the curriculum and supports for students in the classroom. And then again, with the tier-two, tier-three, if we see that this is a need for the student, what is the intervention that's going to match that need? And making sure that we're measuring its effectiveness. And then with our interventions, making sure that there's training over these specialized interventions, and that our interventions are, understanding how to do the interventions with fidelity. So we've been doing a lot of steps in that area.
So you said 80% in your tier-one is your goal.
Yep.
Roughly, where are we at now? I mean, I imagine it varies by grade level, but on the whole, how far off of that ideal pyramid are we?
We are, we're gaining steps in that direction of making that bigger with the goal of 80%. In general, we're around 60% right now. So we're definitely, as we're looking at our data, that has increased in the last few years, but we're looking to increase it more as we more effectively implement this.
And that 60%, is that fairly consistent across buildings? Like as a district, we're about 60% in every building? Or is there certain?
Yeah.
Buildings that just really have big discrepancies?
There's a little discrepancies in each building, but in general, 60% is where we're at.
Are you looking for like an amount of kids or a lot? Well, I.
That's what I'm hoping for. How much are we serving?
So. These are good questions. It's more so. A little bit. I'm trying to think how best. As far as numbers, again, we're resource-based. So the more we can work at our strengthening our tier-one, we have then tier-two and tier-three specialists that can help with our students. So as far as numbers right now, again, it's a little bit different in each building. And I don't have the information right now, but I can give that to you. So you know, when we're talking about tier-two, these are how many students are receiving tier-two services in each building, that kind of a thing. And then another piece is making sure that what we're doing translates, and there's communication and engagement between school and home. And so one of the things that we've been working on is our MTSS handbook, which is basically all the different pieces of MTSS in one place. So we've been working at completing that because there's lots of different pieces to it. As we've been completing our self-assessments, those over 100 questions from MDE, we're seeing that there are certain pieces that we need to make sure that we have in writing, this is our process, or this is our plan for supporting students if they're struggling. These are the ways that we're strengthening our tier-one, those kinds of things. So we might, we need to make sure that that handbook is in place, and that'll be completed by this summer so we can make sure that we're connecting with families of if a student is receiving intervention, this is why, this is what the data shows. This is our process for seeing which students need extra, and this is how we're going to match their need with an intervention. And then that consistent communication in different ways. If it is a student who is meeting with the counselors or interventionists, making sure that parents are involved in that piece through phone calls, emails, newsletters, conferences.
Can you share that with the board when you complete it? The MTSS? The MTSS handbook? There's just a lot of man-hours involved in this and I know it takes up a lot of you guys' hard work and time. So I think from, um, you know, our perspective where we're just looking at numbers on paper, it's helpful to know sometimes what all those man-hours are, you know, are doing. And, and you know, we, we don't, w- we don't do it as directly as you obviously, but we all certainly want what's best for our students too. And so, you know, any, any program that you're adv- advancing that's gonna help our students, I mean, it's just nice to have a little bit more understanding of how, how that's happening, so. And then, um, you know, thank you for entertainment questions. I just, I kind of wanted to put it in context that, you know, we throw around the acronym of MTSS and, and to actually, what does that mean?
Right.
Again, to the, to the, a person in the room that isn't in the classroom every day. So that's why I kind of was drawing out a little bit and I appreciate you elaborating a little bit more on that, because, um, again, I know a lot of your efforts go into that and, and what does that do to actually help, help our students in the room? And so I, I appreciate you, um, explaining that more. So, thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Uh, we're going on to PBIS.
Having us tonight, we are gonna be sharing an update on PBIS in our building. Um, but we think it's helpful every few years to just kind of back up and actually talk about what PBIS is. We often, um, we just look at the data and don't necessarily take a, a good look at what the program is. And so for some of you that's gonna be old, you've heard it many times, but others of you, um, we're making some new information. So we're gonna kind of give a background of PBIS and then I'll talk about anything that's old this year and then we'll talk about PBIS. Um, so PBIS, actually the first cohort in Minnesota went through a two-year training in two thousand and five. I was actually in St. Cloud and St. Cloud was one of those that went through that first cohort. So we have about twenty years of this practice in Minnesota. So enough time to really gather some data on, um, what are the results of PBIS being used. So this is what the data has shown when you implement PBIS. Reduction in public behavior, increased academic performance, increased independence, improved perception of safety, improved organizational efficiency, reduction in staff turnovers, increased perception of teacher competency, and then that reduction of kind of that negative behavior. And so PBIS, the definition, is that if it's evidence-based three-tier framework to improve and integrate all the data systems and practices, it helps to improve everything. And it says PBIS grade schools are all students succeed. So very similar to a MTSS framework, we call it in the end, there's those same three tiers that exist in PBIS. And so I actually like to look at it as three umbrellas. And so the first umbrella is a tier one practice, that means it's for all of our students. And that's for your developing what are your school-wide expectations, ensuring that they are top to our students, ensuring that they're reinforced, ensuring that they're consistent throughout the learning. And this, um, wording picture here kind of gives us a picture, like when our students sort of how to re-spend it for multiply or drive, we know that we need to teach them. But when we get to that behavior, sometimes we don't realize that we're also gonna need to teach them. So that really goes under that first umbrella of ensuring that we have top expectations and that our students feel that. So the second umbrella then is that positive reinforcement. So when students are doing what we want them to do, we're going to acknowledge that we're gonna be appreciating this. Um, and sometimes this is where PBIS gets a bit of a rep, because they're thinking, why should I? I'll go reinforce them for doing what they're supposed to be doing. And I always give this analogy that in life, we all have positive reinforcements. Um, I don't think any of us would be doing our job without positive reinforcement of each other. Even though that's what we're supposed to be doing, that positive reinforcement will go away. So it also does the same. And that last umbrella then, similarly to, um, kind of what Ben shared with MTSS, when the things that are, that we have in place for tier one are not working, it may have those practices that cover our tier two, tier three, support our students. So Big Lake's background, um, the middle school started their PBIS training in two thousand and twelve. And what that looks like is there's a two-year training that you were, then your team goes through. Um, and then the re- indeed we went through, um, into two thousand and five. And so during that two years, these are the things you develop. Our consistent expectations are built and all of us brain have our own. How we will teach, how we will love, how we will reteach these to all of our students. How we'll monitor that all of our staff fills in and all of our students fill in for that consistency. How we'll positively reinforce that positive behavior. We identify what our classroom behavior is versus administrative management behaviors. And then, um, those procedures and things for when it is the administrative side, um, how we will have your support. So that's just a little reminder of the background of what PBIS is. And so then getting into each of our schools, so in the summertime, our teams come together and we look at what are our, what are our goals this year for PBIS. And so Indy sets three goals for this year. One is to implement a new quarter report to see the monthly snapshots. So it's really tiny there. You can see it, that's what's up in the corner there. But the PBIS teams meet monthly and they dig into the behavior data from the monthly report. So we look at how many referrals were there. Were there any trends of the day of the week, the time of the day? Um, the location, are there areas that we need to reach to that expectation? So we really dig into them and sometimes that's like twenty pages of that. And so when our team is done, we share that with our staff, but it's not that and we know they don't consistently do this in the past. We really wanted a quick snapshot for our teachers to look at every month to see the scores for last week or last month. The years here, the trends we're noticing, um, but then there are the positives. So we have number of quarter tickets received that month, number of student shout-outs, number of sessions. So our second goal was our school-wide implementation of SmartPass. The year before, we had highlighted it with about quarter of our staff. And then this year we did, um, whole wide. And SmartPass is just a system that we utilize in our students when they need a pass. So every classroom has what we call a PIAF, it's just a phone book that's at the door. So if a student needs to use the classroom, they can see the nurse or go to the hallway and they fill out a quick pass on the SmartPass. And it does a lot of things. It allows us to track how many instructional minutes they may have lost throughout the day for all the times they left the room. It tracks if you wanna limit the amount of passes those students have. But what's really powerful is you can ensure students are out of the building or out of their rooms at the same time. So if you ask a student to have a parent conflict, for instance, you can put that in the system. So if one student goes to get a pass to a bathroom and they go out, and another student in another classroom, we've indicated should be out of the classroom at the same time, wants to go see the nurse, it'll actually just say you're in the queue. And you could be in the queue because there's too many in the nurse at that time, or you could be in the queue because of that parent conflict. And we've really seen some positive results of that, just reducing the number of times that most students have to go out. And then our last goal for this year was our tier two team developing those interventions similar to what Ben talked about. Um, so this year we've been implementing our check-in, check-out behavior intervention. And then we're looking at Character Strong and some of the tiers we've written that they have, so more important. But just some data for you, that positive reinforcement, here are our numbers of quarter tickets that we not only gave out each year, but received back. So you can see there is a huge buy-in with our staff, our students, and recognizing that's positive behavior. So there are a lot of things. And obviously we can't measure how many are given out, we only measure how many come, come back to us. But the way they come back to us is they can spend it, we have a sticker store, but that just comes every, the month, it's not very often, it's four times a year. Um, but we have a growing menu. And so here are some pictures of some different ways students have used their quarter tickets. So just going across, um, the first one there, students use it for extra quiet. Next in line was, that was a junior recess manager. Third one there, a student can use it at lunch with me and Parker. Then we have extra music time, extra STEM lab going along the bottom. Like I use this quarter ticket to be my principal assistant. Next to him, I have a student who uses it to, um, have lunch at recess with me. I just realized who that was. Um, next to her, if we have students use it for a therapy doc. And there's probably thirty items on our hornet menu, so I'm just highlighting the popular ones. And then the last one, very popular one, that is the principal taxi. I arrive at lunch and deal them back to class. No, I said either.
Oh.
All right, on to Liberty. I'm hoping that you hear a lot of consistency, cause that's kind of our goal. Um, so we build into the Hornet Way, so at Liberty and Little Learners, we are be safe, be kind, be a learner. Um, so those are kind of our main objectives. And I was walking one of our kids, um, that received, uh, special education services the other day through their band. And she saw me and she goes, please, we have a kid learner. It was in there. And I was so proud, because that's what we want. We want them to see those values and wanna uphold those values. So again, our PBIS team meets monthly. We meet in the summer to really create our goals. And really we look at trying to highlight that positive behavior and then continually dive into our data, our behavior data and see where we're having issues, looking for aid patterns and then really working to reteach those expectations, just like Indy does. So our goals of our PBIS team this year, our first one is really increasing our whole involvement. So we also have, um, buzzy grams. Um, ours look a little different and they don't earn anything from them, because often times we have big meltdowns when they don't earn something. But we do a giant, uh, we have a giant hive in our office that all of them are added into and then we have a whole school celebration. And we're really trying to focus on, uh, creating memories with them. So last year I was on the roof or I was smiling, um, eating a bug is always, um, a high, a high priority. Um, but we try to have fun together. But we don't even know that we want, um, their parents and guardians to know when they've done something really good. So our buzzy grams now have a part cycle at home and a part cycle in our hive. And really we're hoping that our parents see that and they celebrate their success at home as well. Um, and then in January, we had a family survey and we really wanted to know what their perspective was on if they're feeling that their child is safe, kind of being a learner and what their child is feeling and what feedbacks from all different angles. And we got really positive feedback, so we're excited about the partnership we have. Um, our second goal is really looking at being super intentional about our monthly behavior data and really diving into it really deep in our PBIS team. But also at our staff meetings and trying to help people see that we need to work together to reteach, you know, our cafeteria expectations or whatever it is. And then really ha- find ways to highlight that positive behavior. And then again, similar to independence, our tier two, our tier two team is really working to increase our intervention. So if they're really struggling with being impulsive, that's give them interventions to try to help that and then have data to measure if what we're doing is helping them and if not, see what else we can do. So trying to be more intentional with how we can increase that positive behavior that we can achieve. So here are some highlights from Liberty. So up in the corner is the be safe, be kind, be a learner. So all of our classrooms start with different, um, ways to do that in our different locations of our whole building. So everyone's on the same page. And then every other month, we do school-wide buzzing challenges or classroom-wide buzzing challenges and they work together in an area that we've improved it and then they work toward the goal. So we have a lot of pajama days, we have a lot of green stuffy days, um, lots of fun to celebrate. The lower part of the, of Earth pictures, the hive that they're working to fill. And then our gong that we have at our buzz dashes to celebrate our successes. And then in that middle, when you see, when you see a Mr. Ant and Buzz and a kid getting a high five, that is at our buzzing dashes. So at our buzzing dashes, we also honor hornet heroes. And you'll see them featured on the TV. I should've been more strategic on where I was placing these, but you see them featured on our TV. And you'll see families, we have tons of families in our building. So you'll see people picking up their kids from Kip Club or High Time and just standing and waiting for their picture to be up there. Mom, wait, wait, I love your story. So it's really, really priceless. And then we have other ways that we really work to highlight positive behavior, like a positive principal call up there, a Missy on up there. Our golden tray, which are cafeteria monitors and tissues, outstanding classrooms that are showing that behavior that we really need. We carry it over to our staff meetings and we start every staff meeting with celebrating three staff that really are showing that outstanding behavior flowing above and beyond, um, to make Liberty the place we all want it to be. Um, down by Buzz, you'll see more hornet heroes. You'll see in the lower right, one of our students holding a buzzy gram. It is upside down. But it is there and she was still proud. Um, and then we have the little hornet news, which we've really helped students see different ways they can be, be safe, be kind, be a learner. You have to be a second group role model to be chosen to do that. And that's that little student with a certificate, um, between Miss Young and I. Um, and then we also get a little activity cast where they get to go into a varsity game for free. Um, so really trying to build that positive and most common community connection. So that's what we think that's great.
Hi there, I'm Cindy Patton, Assistant Principal at the Middle School. Um, middle school students are a little bit different. I don't know that this stuff would work necessarily. They don't necessarily like to be, um, called out or recognized individually. A lot of times wanting to do, um, recognition, they would like to be a part of the group or with their friends. But we've had some really, um, great times recognizing all the positive things that our middle school students do. Um, like Indy and Liberty, our PBIS team meets monthly as well as in the summer to do some planning. Last summer we met in August and just kind of set the stage. Back to school is a huge time for us, because we are reassembling, bringing everybody together, and really spending some time reteaching. We've got some, um, getting back into the school swing of things is really difficult at times for students, because they've had some free time over the summer and, um, we just want to ensure that everybody starts school on a positive step. One of the things that we do do is spend a lot of time teaching our Hornet Way at the middle school. And we have a pride matrix. And our pride matrix stands for positive, respect, initiative, determination, and etiquette. And in our advisories, at the beginning, couple of weeks of the school year, we spend a lot of time talking with students about what it means to be a positive middle school student. What it means to have initiative or determination or respect. And you'll see these reminders in our classrooms as well as in our lunchroom and our hallways. I would like to stress the fact that we're always reteaching. And I think that that's one of the reasons PBIS is so well-celebrated and successful. There's never not an opportunity to reteach, even when we're working one-on-one with a student in our office. It's always reteaching those positive behaviors. So the goals that our team came up with this summer is engaging all students. And one hundred percent of our students, when we talk about tier one, tier two, tier three, all of our students are tier one students. So all of our students get, um, teaching on the Hornet Way, those positive behaviors. And we wanna model and teach and recognize all of these skills. And that's gonna happen in the hallways, in the cafeterias, in the classrooms, anywhere we're with students. And it's all staff. So it's our teachers, it's our parent educators, it's our lunchroom servers, it's our custodial staff. Everybody has a rule in being part of that PBIS system. Then we are taking opportunities to identify and train and implement the tier two, tier three practices. And the one that we're focusing on this year is referred to as check-in, check-out. And I think, um, Shana mentioned that. And so we've trained, um, a number of our staff, um, and this would be considered a tier two. So this, going back to where, um, Ben talked about an MTSS system, tier two isn't for all students. You're looking at maybe fifteen percent of the students that are going to be, um, working in a check-in, check-out intervention program. And check-in, check-out is, uh, a way it's evidence-based practice, meaning regardless of works. We have somebody like our dean of students or a counselor that would meet with a student at the beginning of the day, maybe set some goals. We do this for a period of time. So there's a relationship that develops between the student and that adult. And that adult can be a teacher, it can be a counselor, an administrator, or a dean of students. And then the student is checking in with this adult every day, maybe setting some goals. And then at the end of the day, there's an, an additional check-out. How did you do today? How did things go? Is there anything we need to work on tomorrow? Did you have any problems? Is there anything that I can support you in as we go forward? So that's what our, um, tier two, tier three focused practice is working like. And we're hoping to, um, bring that into full implementation next year. And also we are looking at Character Strong, which is a advisory curriculum that we will be using with our students that also has some tier two, tier three opportunities for us. And then finally, we take a look at data- And then finally, we take a look at data. Just like John and Theresa mentioned, in our PBIS meetings, we are looking at data. We are determining areas for reteaching and remodeling for our students. One example of this is we noticed that we were seeing a lot of turkeys. And one of the things that we decided as a team, and I think this really emphasizes the positive and positive behavior interventions and supports, but we did a no turkey challenge through the month of February. And we maintain data every week. This was based in advisories. So all of our advisories, our advisors had access to the data for their students. And we challenged our students to all be in class on time. And every time they had an advisory, which is Monday, Tuesday, their advisor would meet with them and talk to them about the importance of being, why would wanna be in class on time, right? Why would maybe don't wanna be late because of the disruption and the missed learning? But the advisors had a huge role in partnering with the students and encouraging those students and recognizing weekly which was what the students were doing that were making them need to class on time and seeing that achievement of that goal. And so then, following the month of February, we had two advisories from each grade that had an opportunity to celebrate with treats in the cafeteria along with some beans and other door prizes. So that was a good example of recognizing that positive behavior. These are some pictures of things that we have done in the celebration of our students doing what we ask them to do and what we expect for them to do. We have a claw machine, which is pretty cool at the middle school. And so our last, I think we used this for our trimester two challenge, blue gold challenge. So our students are divided up into a blue team and a gold team. And we have competitions throughout every trimester and it's a goal. But unfortunately, it's for me anyway, the blue team missed one, trimester one and trimester two. But so the blue team, we do three separate days of celebration. They come in during advisory time. They get an ice cream sandwich or an icy. They get some free time. They can talk to their friends. They can, we have, we gave out tickets and we did drawings for an opportunity to try out the claw machine. There's a machine in the back. You can see in the lower right-hand corner, you have some students that are throwing balls against the wall. The machine is called the Blue. And it's an interactive game that the students love playing. And so this is just some free time for them and I think they really appreciate it.
For me, okay. So once we have a check-in and check-out like she has with, with John does, with the laptop or, you know.
Oh, smart pass is more.
Yeah, smart pass, thank you.
That's a great question. We do not.
Okay.
But I will tell you that for some of our students, we have designed what we call a Julie Pass. So there are some students that need to be monitored a little bit more closely during the day. And so, and I would say right now, we probably have five to seven of those students. So we work with those students and we just kind of tighten up their ability to make a choice. So maybe to use the restroom or go to their locker during class. And what a Julie Pass is, is we ask that any student that is on a Julie Pass, the teacher will call Julie, who is our lead administrative assistant. And she knows whether or not we are preventing that student from being out with another student, making duo-appear conflict. And she's able to basically tell the teacher if it's okay for that student to leave the classroom to use the restroom. One of the things that we track, this is a good use of our, we're using data here. We're looking at how many times that student is leaving the classroom during the day. Yep. We have to do it. It's a little rudimentary, but we're.
Well, and I would, is it, I don't know, for the two of you, is there a lot of interruption time dealing that kind of stuff? Having to, especially if you don't have a smart pass, I don't, you know, where that seems like that, it would be interruptive or.
At times, yes, but our students know that they need to respect what the teacher is doing in the classroom. If a teacher is directing a lesson, I would say that at that point, it would be inappropriate for the student to raise their hand and interrupt. And we teach that. There are the right, the good times to ask for the privilege to leave. And those that you may want to avoid that. And I don't, our teachers are very cooperative and they actually appreciate the ability to just kind of keep those kids a little bit closer at hand. And I'm not having any concerns or anything. Like I said, I think the teachers appreciate. Normally, I would say 95% of our students have the ability to get up, sign out, take a pass and go to the restroom.
Without just quiet, you're saying, just, you know, they just obviously encourage them to eat during, you know, passing time.
And there are definitely times that that doesn't necessarily work.
Of course.
I'll give you, yeah. So one of our students, it was lunchtime and fifth period, which is right after lunch started. And we got a phone call in the office that they needed to use the restroom. Well, I know that you were just at lunch and you had an opportunity to use the restroom at lunchtime. And could you please wait for about 10 minutes before you send the students on to bed? Okay, so we do keep it's like that.
I have a question. It's kind of going back to, coming out of MTSS and out of PBIS. So like this one, the tier two meeting, or you're doing some meeting with different teachers or staff, right? Are they kind of double fifty now? So they're part of PBIS program around end of tier two program or is there?
Actually, they're, they're, they're very intertwined, I would say. And if you were going to jump in. But when we talk about, in the MTSS model, that our tier two, tier three team needs, some of the interventions that they are giving are the ones that we are talking about in PBIS. So there is a lot of connection between the MTSS model as well as the PBIS model.
MTSS isn't a program. So it's like when we see those tier two students and they're not like an MTSS program. It's just a framework that lets them identify the students. And so if they're identified through MTSS, they need more behavior support. We're in that first level of practice.
Okay, so, and we try to make it really fluid too. So if someone at tier two, if we're giving them instructions for about six weeks, then we're gonna re-dig into that data and say they gotta be new proven or is they'll be needing this? And if not, let's get it back. If they are, let's continue.
Or add.
Yeah, let's add check-in methods. Let's add something more to help see if things are better. And those tier two practices don't work or, you know, and I gave my example of, you know, five to seven students that have that special Julie Pass. There's going to be one or two that that doesn't work for. That becomes an escort. And so in the event of, to break, if the Julie Pass isn't working and they're not able to go out on their own, then we call for an escort and somebody actually goes, like me, or another administrator or anybody available will walk into that student. And it also, you know, that escort is an opportunity for a check-in. Are you in? How's your day? Anything I can do to support you?
And make them hope that if they're gonna get escorted, maybe up the proper ladder, you know.
Yeah.
I mean, I think that whole thing at middle school is just a little bit of a ballgame.
Middle school is great too. It really is. I promise. We have to, we have to think outside the box. And it is definitely a transition period, but yeah.
Another way to prepare, like the MTSS PBIS, so like MTSS is tier one. If you get, what is our tier one programming for their students? And elementary and CKLA, what is our tier one programming for behavior? That's what PBIS. So there are one, like it's in them.
Do I have to pull the behavioral and.
MTSS.
Yes.
And PBIS is one of the resources.
So I just had one question. Have you or Mr. Ernst offered to eat a bug? Because you say that that doesn't work for middle, you say middle schoolers are different, but I gotta tell ya. I kinda wonder if you walk into your cafeteria and say, "Hey, listen up, guys. You've been loud lately." As I hear has happened. And by the way, if you're quiet, Mr. Ernst, who didn't come tonight, so we'll make him do it. He will eat a bug. Just, just curious. Just throwing it out there.
When I was a middle school principal, it was on the table to shave an eyebrow. But it was really high and I'm like, "You guys can earn a million dollars for this thing. I'll do it."
I think the slime would work too, being the slime. We do have hornet bugs. And at one point, I believe it was in January, we did a survey of the students and we asked, "What would you like to be able to spend your hornet bug on?" And they said things like donuts. They want a donut party. They want a pizza party. They want time on their cell phone, which I don't think we're gonna know there. But it's a difference. I appreciate it if y'all munch the bugs.
I think the slime would work too, being the slime. Just, just saying. I got one in all your buildings. So I.
Oh, thank you.
I'm just saying, there's a lot of crossover at the dinner table talk. That's all I'm saying. There's a lot of crossover.
On to data update.
Oh, I disagree. Data is a lot of fun. Data is so much fun. No, you're right. Nope, I let, yep, I let them have the fun ones. All right. So three times a year, we're coming to you with data. And so that was the promise. So we came in the fall after our fall screenings. We come after our universal screening. Our universal screeners are the big tests that we use to help us make those database decisions. And then we use progress monitoring once kids get into interventions. But I'm gonna come three times a year and just show you that big universal screening data for both attendance, academics, and SEL. So this is something that all of our buildings do and it's not letting me turn. There it goes. All right. We're just a little slow tonight. So all of our buildings go through data dig processes. This is nothing different. I've showed you this before. We kind of predict, huh, what do we think our attendance data is gonna look like? What do we think our reading data is gonna look like? We look at it and we just get some high-level observation. We wonder about it and then we ask if we need to plan. So for, for example, I want you to predict right now, what do you think our attendance data is gonna look like? Our goal is always about 90%. We're always going for about 90% attendance data. And then we're gonna look at it and we're just gonna say, "This is the data." So for attendance, there is our monthly attendance. So the difference between a full day attendance rate and our reported attendance rate is if kids are not in school for a full day, they don't get a full day attendance rate. So, and we have kids leaving, I know, right? That was the tricky one. Brilliant. And we have kids leaving for a lot of different reasons. If they're going to Wright Tech, if they're going for on-the-job training. So that data is lower and it's skewed not all for bad reasons of kids leaving. It's not. Yes, this is, this is only district-wide. So I'm just gonna give you guys district on this. Yeah. We do know that attendance is one of the big indicators if kids are successful in school or not. So we've really taken it on this year for attendance as being one of our interventions that we do with kids to try and get kids in school above that 90%. And so that's monthly attendance. And then we also do weekly attendance because we like to make sure that we have kids coming to school on Mondays and Fridays as well as Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. So it's nice to see that we don't have those big dips because sometimes we do. So then academic assessment data. So we do use FastBridge, which is now a required screener for the state of Minnesota. And noticing that we use early reading and early math in kindergarten and first grade, A-reading and A-math for second through 10th grade. So just so you get a reminder of what our FastBridge benchmark colors are. So the low risk, which is our 40th to 99th percentile, or on A-reading, it'll be the 40th to 70th. And then they have an advanced category, 71 to 99. That's on grade level. So that's considered a grade level. So that's where we're trying to get kids. That some risk, 15th to 39th percentile, would, would flag for us that those are kids that we'd have to look at for intervention. Right now, being we're resource-based, we're not able to serve up to that 40th percentile. We're more serving that 25th percentile and below. And then the high-risk level is that 15th percentile and below. And those are kids that we're going to look at that need more intervention or possibly specialized services. So our literacy data. So we'll start with our early reading. Remember, this is kindergarten and first grade at Liberty. And so this time, I'm just gonna show you our fall to winter data. So we can do just a comparison of fall to winter. So we can see that our low risk went from 47 to 56. And so, Ashley, you were asking Ben and I was like, "Wait, wait. I've, I've got that. I've got..." Okay, so there it is. Our goal is to get that to 80%, okay? We're not there yet, but that is our goal. And we know that it's gonna take, with the, with the new literacy, they're, they're saying three years before you see. We're starting to see some really good gains in that. I do wanna also say the early reading scores in FastBridge. We have one component that does not align to ReadACT, and that is the sight words. Yes, I'm mentioning it. They're all sitting back there going, "We've had this discussion." Which plays, it's a really heavy part of the psychometricianists, what they get this data off them. And it doesn't match. So you can, there's all different kinds of sight words. The test picks these. Our curriculum picks those. So we're really not matching what we're teaching. And so we know that's a skewed, FastBridge is working on it. They're well aware of this. But they're the state assessment. So it's a little skewed. For our A-reading, and this is Liberty, so this is second grade. And so you can see we had very nice growth with our second grade. And, and I, I am hoping that those foundational skills that we were teaching in CKLA played our wonder. I wonder. I don't know. But yeah, so there's that data. And then in the A-reading, so we had a decrease in our, and we kind of look at that low and advanced level together, of course, trying to get that closer to that 80%. And so a decrease. So something that we go, hmm, okay. What's spring gonna look like? And then do we have to have an action step on it? And so that was a lot of discussion that happened at Indy in February during our data days. And so looking at that.
So that's one of the questions I'd written down for you is, do you have, did you make a change based off of this now? Or is it a wait and see since you're still early into CKLA?
Yeah. So, I don't know. John, do you wanna speak to that or?
There's, there's a favorite question. So one of us, with our CKLA implementation, in this in-between time, there's some gaps that they're missing.
Sure.
But as soon as they've started at Liberty and come out, we'll have those gaps filled in. So we're expecting this drop a little bit right now because we aren't able to teach CKLA fidelity and the gaps at the same time.
Got it. Yep.
So I'm really here to see, you know, like two years ago, what's their data like when they've had from the beginning, where they're filling those gaps. But other, but we didn't change anything mid-year because we've actually also seen a trend where in our winter, for some reason, it does dip and then the spring goes back up. So that's been a common trend that we've had mid-year.
And that's FastBridge in general. So the FastBridge metrics, so they're not just going, you're gonna get tested on the same thing and see where your kids are. FastBridge assumes we're gonna grow. And so it's just, are you growing with that? And so that's kind of been FastBridge's deal since we've all started FastBridge across the state. Everyone sees this dip in the winter and then a raise again in the spring. And Big Lake sometimes even sees a nice raise in the fall. So whatever Big Lake kids are doing at the library in the summer, good for us. And then the other piece of that is this would be the year that we would dig into CKLA to look at just gaps in the curriculum compared to our standards. But because we've been doing so much literacy training, which I believe is helping, we've not been able to do that work as well. And so there's been some little bit of disconnect of what we would have normally done in curriculum work. So.
Is that a trend that's consistent throughout all of Indy? Or is that, I mean, is there one particular grade level that's bogging your numbers down?
We always find their grades lower for a certain little bit. And by fifth grade, our scores are pretty good. And so we really feel like it's like a collective year of getting there, right? It's not, we are seeing that it's just fifth grade doing something different than the rest, but it's really all of them.
And that's how it's been even before. And that's how it's been even before CKLA. We kind of saw that as well, so, yeah. So, and then for middle school, again, we saw the dip, and in middle school, um, I believe it was our sixth grade that was high, seventh grade, low, eighth grade, high. So it just kind of went all over. They are going through ELA adoption, and will have a new curriculum next year pending board approval. Onto math. So for math, again, at Liberty, we have our early math. And so starting out very strong in our math. Um, this is something that we're going to look at new curriculum for next year, just because we do not have that horizontal, vertical alignment with math. Um, in fact, I'll give a little plug for our math. Um, our math curriculum is so old. How old is it? Um, it's so old that we're not sure that we're gonna be able to buy math books for next year. I know, right? And we're not so. Yes, you should check into that because we're having, we're struggling right now. We knew, we couldn't get the online curriculum this year. We knew that was. Yeah, so we've, we've known that this is gonna happen. They're not supposed to be up for adoption for a couple of years, but we might have to fast-track it now. Um, so our A-reading at Liberty is in that sixty-two, so that's looking closer to eighty, so. And then Indy had growth.
So Minda, you'd mentioned that right now, because of resources, you're able to assist to like the twenty-fifth percentile in, you know, interventions. Is that both literacy, is that both reading and math, or is that just for reading? What's the math intervention look like right now?
Thank you for bringing that up, Ashley.
You're welcome, Minda.
No, we don't have the resources, school board, that we need. We are putting all of our resources towards reading and behavior. And so, um, so we have very little math intervention. So the schools are just scrambling to pull together whatever they can. We don't have. So our MTSS framework would be look at data, provide this in a very systematic and explicit way. We don't have that for math. We have some intervention at the middle school. Liberty and Indy do their best. We have teachers doing differentiation. I mean, but it's really piecemealed. It's not, it's not a systematic intervention yet. My hope is that as our needs for reading intervention go down, that we will backfill that with math. Um, we just submitted our AdSIS application this year, and for the next two years, we're still gonna focus on literacy and behavior. And then my hope is that we will flip that over to math in the following AdSIS application. So that's what we're gonna do. That's definitely what we're gonna do, because we'll be there by then. So that's what we're gonna do.
Has this been a big change in Big Lake?
Oh.
Doesn't have math intervention, or has Big Lake always struggled with math intervention?
We've not had math intervention for the three years I have been here, or it's been sporadic. I don't. Angie? Teresa? Angie? I don't. Yeah. Right. And what we call an intervention is something that is very systematic, explicit, that is progress monitored. Is, that doesn't mean there's a lot of really good math supports happening, and we've kind of tweaked that language. Um, supports means it's extra things that we're doing for students. We're just not progress monitoring it with data and putting it under that framework, which is very explicit, and we're really watching those kids. So there's a lot of math supports happening, and our data shows that. We're doing, we're doing very well in math. We just want to get to that point where we can really use database decision-making, and then that explicit evidence-based instruction for students. We're not there yet.
So perhaps with new updated curriculum, you'll be able to.
Well, and that'll be something that we'll look at. We'll look at a curriculum that possibly comes with supports, um, so that we know that we can provide that in lieu of that resources that we need, so.
I mean, I think they've always been creative about having support for math, maybe not systematic, but I, I know, like, my son was in Excel math. And so some of those students would go over to the middle school and help other students that were struggling. You know, um, like mentor. And I don't know if they still do that at the middle school level or not, but, I mean, I think through all the years, there's always been different ways that they found to support students that need support, even if it's not systematic.
Most of our buildings have intervention times, and the teachers are using that to teach them math and provide the supports. We just don't have like math intervention, it's like you have to.
We have math supports in all, you know, in all buildings, we have some sort of math support. Um, just not that systematic, explicit, evidence-based intervention yet. Yet. So, um, yeah, so there's middle school. And then our SEL data. We do two different kinds of SEL. Um, we have the students take their My Sabers results, and there's Liberty's student data. And then the teachers fill one out, and so there's Liberty's Sabers data. And they're calling them now Sabers student and Sabers teacher rather than My Sabers, so I make a mistake on that. I know it's been many years that I've ingrown to that. Um, there's Indy's student. And Indy's teacher. And you can see this is at that eighty percent or above that we're looking for, so. And middle school student. And I just wanna call attention to this. We have a lot of times our middle school, high school students go down in the winter. It's kind of very common to see. Um, and so this is wonderful, just that even, even though it went down a little bit, um, a lot of times students, and we don't know if it's just a Minnesota thing, that's always a wondering, like, oh, it's cold and they don't get outside. But, um, so that was kinda nice that it stayed steady. And then the teacher.
So I was curious about that, Minda. Is it, what teacher is doing the Sabers on students? I mean, since they change classes every, you know.
It's, so we, um, so they've tried some different things because their advisory teacher doesn't always know them the best. So I know we've tried like their ELA teacher, we've tried different teachers. I'm not, to be honest, sure where they've landed this year. Um, being Cindy's new, I know they had that discussion, but I don't see anybody in this room that's in middle school, so. I know.
You can tell it's her first year. She doesn't realize, we just might call her back.
I'll text her and let you know by the end.
Yeah, please do.
I do know she also has a very long drive home, so she wouldn't be answering my texts, so.
I just was, I just saw that.
Because I know they were having that discussion, because it is a tricky thing in high school and middle school. Because to do this well, you have to know the student.
Right.
Um, and so in middle school, seeing all those different kids, you want it to be a teacher that knows you fairly well. Which is why we do our, our Sabers assessments a little later in the year. We don't do them right away. Um, so yeah, that's a, I should know that, and I don't, sorry.
I just was curious. Like I said, I saw that data, and I'm like, I wonder who they.
How about high school? Do you know who's doing your high school data?
No.
It has, it, so here's the students, and again, um, this is ninth and tenth graders. Um, and then the teachers, it was ELA, but I'm not even sure that that's, that's even, I think.
Done.
They just did students. Yeah, so. Alright, and data is, like, we're really growing into a database system, and I'm, I'm so proud that we're moving away from just wondering and thinking and using our guts, um, that we're really using data and triangulating data and, and building a system for collecting this. Um, and so, and, and the amount of time we spend making sure we're looking at the data. So we look at it from the district level, the building level, their PLCs, their PGP's, and in their own personal world. So data has become something that we do. Data by itself is useless. Data is only useful if you apply it. And so that's what we've, it's just become something we do. So, any questions?
I have a comment.
Mr. Trubinback.
I know that's a shocker. Uh, but, uh, no, I just have to say, you know, I, I've had the opportunity to sit in on a few of the meetings, in particular, MTSS. I like to go to the district level one, and what I really appreciate is the intentionality, and what I really like to see is like the growth. And like, you can just hear it, because there, I typically sit kind of outer ring and I listen, and I hear the conversations, and over the course of the year, because the meet is it once every month?
Once a month.
Once a month. Um, so I'm able to kinda hear even the depth of conversation, and people, it may, it's maybe happening without you even noticing it, but I feel like those meetings are really meaningful, and it's really starting to come together. And it's really starting to like utilize like, uh, the language and being intentional and doing some of the pieces that are there. Obviously, tonight, we was really heavy on the presentations of all the really cool stuff, but please know, these people are working really hard. I'm, I, I say this, I was saying this at the Chamber of Commerce meeting to some people, I'm really proud of what we got going here. And, and we have merely, we've, we've started, there's more to come, folks. So it takes time. It's, you know, it's not, it's not an easy, like, just flip the switch. But like with anything, you gotta stay consistent and see it through with fidelity, and we're gonna continue to see some improvements. And I'm really proud of the hard work that Minda and your whole department, principals, teachers, Paris, the whole group, they're all coming together and working on stuff. So I think that's really important to just acknowledge. Um, it's really neat, really neat. So thank you for sharing all that information tonight, Minda.
And I do, I do wanna say, like, the best part of this has been the alignment. From early childhood all the way through twelfth grade, our whole system is aligned and working in the direction of student success. And so that has been the thing that's brought us a lot of joy.
Thank you for bringing more data to the board. I, I, I know you heard that loud and clear, and I, I really appreciate that, that you make that happen, so thank you very much, Superintendent Trubinback and Assistant Superintendent.
It's been her department, she's been working this with all the principals and the leaders within, but I think I really like John's, uh, comment about kind of, and I'm paraphrasing, but when you're gonna see kind of the true results is in a couple of years, when all those gaps are filled. I'm super excited because Liberty's not coming out of the park, and we're gonna only start seeing those, these, these, all the academic and behavior, everything kinda cruise through our system. Uh, because let's not forget, we had a little thing called a pandemic five years ago, where there's been a lot of stuff that we've been having to relearn. I was listening to PBIS presentation, and I was thinking, boy, we've had to relearn a lot of stuff in general. And I think, um, it takes time, it takes time, but like I said, we're, we're moving in the right direction, so be proud of that. And, uh, good work to all those that are out there doing it, so thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, TJ, uh, bid presentation acceptance of Big Lake Middle School Media Center renovation.
TJ, were you gonna touch on the radon tonight at all, or? Just a joke. No, we're done with radon.
Alright, so before you tonight, I've got the bid for the middle school media center renovation project. The low bid came in, um, from Weber Construction at one million seven hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars. Um, it's a little bit more than what we had originally kinda projected and kinda shot for. Was the low bid. There was some that were substantially higher. Um, I do recommend moving forward with approval. Some of that price, I feel, is, you know, we did bid later in the season, which probably added, you know, five to seven percent right there. The rest, I think, is, a lot of it's from the tariffs. You know, overall, it's still not a bad price. We're at about two hundred and nineteen dollars a square foot when we did the high school about three years ago. That was two hundred dollars a square foot, roughly, one ninety-nine, two hundred, so. Not too bad, um, overall, you know, realistically.
And, and if I can just interject here real quick, TJ, what I'm learning is, is that as, as you go through these bond projects and things like that, the inflationary, that was really uncontrollable. And you, you do the best you can to project out as far as you can. Uh, but the good news is, is even though this was a little bit more, we're still okay.
We still are okay, so.
Just wanted to make sure everybody heard that.
Approval of this, we will still have plenty of funds to get this done, as well as the next item that we have on the list. And we're still projecting a fund balance, just not as great of a fund balance as I was projecting, you know, last Monday. Or Tuesday, after Tuesday's bids, realistically, after Tuesday's bids, I was like on cloud nine, so.
I think ten percent is pretty realistic, I mean, considering.
Yeah, it's been at least two years. I think that was twenty-three, because yeah, twenty-two, we did the ventilation, twenty-three, we did the media center. Twenty-four, we finished Independence and did Liberty. It's all kind of melded together.
Well, I will go ahead and make the motion that we approve the one million seven hundred and ninety-seven dollars.
Seven hundred and ninety-seven thousand, yeah.
Um, for that renovation.
Okay, motion made by Sixberry, second by Nelson. Any other discussion? All in favor? I oppose. Motion carries. And you're up next for Independence Elementary Fire Alarm System.
Yep, so we did, we, uh, had bid opening last Tuesday at two o'clock. Um, we had two bidders. We had Johnson Controls, um, that installs and now owns Simplex, Grinnell. And then we had Egan Companies. Uh, the low bid was Johnson Controls with the Simplex system for two hundred and fifty-nine thousand eight hundred and sixty-five dollars. I was quite shocked at this price, um, considering when we were in construction, we had issued a PR, to replace the entire system, bring it up to code. And they wanted a hundred and twelve thousand four hundred and seventy-one dollars or something like that, more than what they bid a year later, almost, so. I'm waiting for the, the other shoe to fall, but I've already told people, I'm gonna be watching this one like a hawk, because it's dirt cheap, so better not be cutting any corners, because I still want the full system, all new wires, all new everything. So we want the bumper-to-bumper warranty, we want everything to work properly. So I don't want anybody cheating us.
Over the summer?
This'll be over the summer, yeah. So, and they'll have to do it with keeping the existing system operational, and then kinda flip and tear everything out, so. It's gonna be fun. That's included in the bid. There was, there was emails from the engineer.
We talked in detail in our buildings and grounds meeting.
There, there was, uh, emails from the engineer to Johnson Controls saying, you are performing these items. I said, yep. I went, to be more specific, you are replacing this, 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 and this. Yep, we are replacing the entire system. Okay, I'm gonna hold you to it, so.
Maybe they don't have enough jobs this summer or something, I don't know.
Well, they, you know, they wanted to keep Simplex systems in our facilities. It's kind of my, my understanding. I did have a conversation with them afterwards. I said, you know, I had a little apprehension, because I was kinda going, did you miss something? Like, how did we drop, you know, over a hundred thousand dollars? He said, no, we, we really wanna keep our system in your schools. Okay.
Oh, good for them.
Yeah, it, it gives them the ability, because Simplex is very specific. Only a Simplex person can come out and program your Simplex panel. Whereas the other system that we were looking at was quite a bit more open. So you could pick, handpick, you know, seven or eight different contractors, and they could all come in and program your system. Simplex is, you're married to Simplex. But for a hundred and twelve thousand dollars.
I'll also make the motion that we approve the two hundred and eighty thousand eight hundred and sixty-five dollars for Johnson Controls to replace the, um, Independence Elementary School fire alarm.
Motion made by Sixberry, second by Hancock. Any other discussion? All in favor? I oppose. Motion carries.
So yeah, the savings that we saw there helped with the increased cost of the middle school, so, quite a bit.
Yeah. Thank you, TJ. Okay, resolution for non-renewal of teaching contracts?
Uh, yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, every year, both this time, uh, we do have to make some decisions regarding some staffing decisions. And before you is a resolution that is relating to the termination and non-renewal of the teaching contracts, uh, of some probationary certified staff. Uh, the letter is before you as well as part of the resolution. Uh, but I also just want the board to know that this is not necessarily all for performance-based. It's a lot with licenses and things like that. So there's varying reasons for why these individuals are being non-renewed. But this is the formal action that's necessary for us to move ahead with what we need to do. Um, and also too, for those that need to, out of fairness to them, um, we're letting them know in March, so that they can perhaps find another position if they need to, so. I would recommend approval at this time.
Also, just, um, just Chelsea's interview to this, this is something we do every year.
Yeah.
It's nothing, it's not like, oh, yeah, okay, good.
I'll make a motion to approve the term resolution. Oh, termination of non-renewal of the teaching contracts resolution.
Okay, motion made by Chabillon. Second by Nelson. Uh, since this is a resolution, we'll do a roll call vote. Uh, Brown, Nelson.
Aye.
Hancock.
Aye.
Reesner, aye. Sixberry?
Aye.
Chabillon?
Aye.
Okay, the resolution passes six-zero. Okay, first reading of policies?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, first reading, and actually, the next two items are procedural pieces. Um, I know that, uh, we've gone through, we've done a nice job with reviewing those as well. So if there's ever questions about that, please feel free to contact me or your friendly policy committee members.
So both the first and the second readings, if there's any that you, you need, need any updates on, please let us know. Uh, school board committees representative updates. Uh, finance committee, we haven't met. Uh, policy committee, we met last week and got more. Policy committee, we met last week and got more done and updated.
We sure did.
Buildings and grounds? Haven't met. Any other? We had a, did we have a special?
We specialized, specialized co-op, oh my goodness, I forgot the agenda, sorry.
No, that's okay. We had a presentation about Big Lake.
Big Lake, yes. So what um, uh, John Weekly's been doing is inviting coordinators from each of the district, kinda highlighting their districts and some of the strengths and the programs that they offer and how it's structured differently from school to school, uh, from school district to school district. And this month was the Big Lake, we had Monica and Jackie came in and presented, did a really nice job representing the school, so done a nice job.
Yep, did a very nice job. Any other committees?
Just legislatively, um, Angie mentioned the governor's proposed budget. They're starting to go through the education omnibus, I listened to the hearing on that today. It's, it's, there's nothing real earth-shattering. I, I, I mean, both because of the gridlock, because of the gridlock, nothing is really changing in either direction. It's kind of what my, my assessment is.
I agree.
Is that, you know, and so, and, and also because of the, the economics involved. I mean, I was kind of thinking maybe we'd have more policy action, but again, the gridlock is just keeping everything kind of status quo. I just um, just put out there that the, a couple of things that do have some traction in kind of a policy way, but economic way is, there is some traction on some local optional revenue increases. It, it has made it through committees, so there's, and there's identical language in both House and Senate, so there is a possibility that that would get through. But with the equalization, it's, but as far as the budgetary um, stresses that we're facing, it's just really not looking like it's gonna change much. But just for the public to be aware that um, you know, the governor's budget cuts two hundred and forty million dollars from the E-12 budget. So, you know, we're just, that's the situation we're in, so.
And you and I did attend, I was there for part of the time since the last board meeting.
Oh, was that the last board? That was, it was, oh, yes, okay, sorry.
Exactly, MASA and the MSBA uh, joint day at the Capitol. I was there to, I was there in the morning and then you stayed for the afternoon. In the morning, they had some panels, they had the senators, a couple senators, and then they had a couple representatives. And I guess that one of the, one of the pieces that I took from them, um, which I could really appreciate, I can never think of his name, representative, he's from, uh, he's a principal.
Big Bird.
Yes, and I appreciated his honesty, uh, because one of the questions that they asked was, is there any way that you could expedite some of these budgetary decisions? Because schools are creating budgets right now. And sometimes if the decision isn't made until June, that doesn't really help us because we have decisions that need to be made now. And he said, no, there's, there's, he just said, I'm just gonna be honest with you, there's no chance. And that's basically how he said it. He said, there's just no way, there's just no way. So unfortunately, that's just kind of where things are at. But that stood out to me and then I had to leave, so I'm not sure if he had anything else from that day.
No, it, it basically was that, I mean, the, the any sort of budgetary relief or addressing some of these mandates is unfortunately gonna fall on the backs of our local taxpayers. So, you know, one of the things for like the unemployment insurance, um, the, the bill that, you know, seems like it might get through, it, it does put that, you know, one-time money in. I mean, so I just thought it was interesting, so currently, there's thirty-eight million dollars left in the fund, but the estimate is it's gonna be fifty-seven and a half million dollars for the summer of next year. You know, so that fund is out and that's statewide. So it does put some in and the governor did have that in there too, the thirty million one-time funds. But then after that, it would be allowing us to levy, if we so choose at the board level, the unemployment levy for summer term unemployment, which we hadn't been able to do prior. Which I appreciated the MSBA, when they testified, they very clearly said that that's not what local taxpayers voted on. And so to put boards in a position where we either have to pull it from our general fund or levy our local taxpayers, doesn't put us in a good position. And if the state really feels like that's a priority, then that should come from state funds. I, it, it didn't fall on deaf ears, so to say, speak, but it, it's not gonna go anywhere. But I did appreciate that MS, MSBA did speak up for school boards in pointing out that that puts us in a really bad spot. We're gonna have to pay for it. I just wanted to bring that to everybody's attention that, you know.
I took on to give an update on Wright Tech. So since our last meeting, we did, um, like I said, we had some very good candidates, we did superintendent interviews, we spent um, some time. We had a really, really great committee, it was, I, I.
It was great.
It really was, it was made up of um, of staff from Wright Tech as well as um, representatives of the school board members from the school districts and then superintendents. And so I think the combination of us um, really created some good opportunity for conversation around the ideal candidate. And in the end, we settled on um, Brian Nutter and he has a background in CTE, which is great. He actually ran a school similar to Wright Tech, a little bit smaller.
Prior Lake in Shakopee, is that right? No, Prior Lake in Farmington.
Farming, yeah.
Yes, they have a, they have a, they have a co-op between the two with similar programs as to what Wright Tech does. So it's very similar, it was just that instead of working with two districts, he's gonna be working with eight. And I met with him today as well, uh, at our advisory, yeah, yeah, he was able to join and he's planning on, one of the things that all of us superintendents had requested that he makes his way, when he's actually on payroll, he'll, he'll make his way around and introduce uh, himself to the board. The boards, so y'all can know who Brian Nutter is, yeah.
I do think he'll be a really good, I think he's really, I mean, he's a, it was our first choice and um, and he took the offer and that's great. I think he'll do a really good job, I think he's gonna be hands-on, um, hands-on and I think that's what that, that Wright Tech needs, honestly. And that's very important. Let me get his hands dirty a little bit. And I think excited to do it as well, so. Was very impressed and I, and I think, yeah, you know, a positive future.
Absolutely.
Sounds very nervous about losing our current.
Right. I do know that Lynette and I attended, I was there for a little bit, Community Ed Advisory. And it was awesome because we did the Name That Tune game. We started off with that, so that was really good. But uh, I was only there for part of the actual meeting, so I don't know, um, Lynette or, or.
When you have a new person joining too, you know, you really have to backtrack and fill in, you know.
Catch them up.
We asked a lot of questions, a lot of, a lot of stuff about, you know, money and so forth, so. There was a lot of conversation and not, you know.
It's still, it was, it's still a fun group and it's still a really good, really good committee, so they do a really nice job of kinda keeping things moving forward and it's good.
Onto the student representative report.
So for the month of March, I'm pretty sure everybody had everything going on. So this is gonna be a long report, so buckle up. No, I, I promise, it could be probably longer, so. To start off, yeah, to start off the month, uh, March third, Big Lake Band had their concert and they had all bands perform. I thought it went really well. You could really see like the growth in students from like our first concert to now, it was really cool. Following up with Big Lake High School Band, we had solo ensemble. So students get a piece selected from our director, um, and we kinda worked with them to find the right piece for us. And then we spend a lot of time practicing outside of school during staying, working with our teacher. And then we perform it for a judge and then we get scored and then they also give us some like critiques or things like that to help us. A lot of turnout, students were very excited, I was very excited, um, a lot of students had a little fun doing that. Next thing, we had Sherburne County distracted driving awareness video contest, which is the first year Big Lakes participated in this. And students got to make a video, kinda like a skit informational video about distracted driving that could be not wearing your seatbelt, looking at your phone, drinking, driving, all those things. And we had three schools, uh, three groups from Big Lake place in the top four. We had our Big Lake High School Broadcasting Team place second. We had um, Big Lake students Amanda Marks and myself placed third. And then we had Henry and Jake Windows placed fourth place, which I think is really cool and I watched all the videos. They're really cool. So if you guys wanna watch them, I have them on. And then Big Lake Epic students got to visit the Sherburne County Board of Commissioners and kinda presented them about what they're seeing in their schools regarding youth, substance use. They got to have great community conversations and we got to talk about how like the ordinances we have in place and what they look like in real life versus some updates they could potentially do to kinda make um, it like safer and more implementation in like protecting the youth of Sherburne County. The next thing is just recently, our school was recommended and then approved by Doc, I think yesterday, for the hosting of the Central Minnesota Manufacturers Association Career and Technical Education Jamboree. This is gonna be held November twentieth, twenty twenty-five, from seven fifteen to nine AM. And it's gonna focus on how businesses and schools are working together on developing a future workforce. So that's gonna be really exciting. Big Lake High School's first ever girls' flag football team has officially started practice. There was a great turnout, there's gonna be multiple um, JV teams. Practices in, early in the morning and these girls are committed. They're waiting, they're getting up, they're showing up. Yeah, practice starts, you gotta be there before, be ready. And then we had literacy night where there were crafts, coloring books, book walks and book giveaways. And then personally, my favorite, we had bracelet making. So I brought mine to show you guys.
I brought mine.
Yep, yep. Yep, see, I, see, they only brought it cuz I told them I was putting in the report. I told them, I told them, I. I know. No, it's been like sitting in my folder, like with a sticky note next to it, being like, don't forget. And then we also had STEM night as well, we had Big Lake families and community members were able to see how STEM is integrated into each of our buildings. Attendees also got to enjoy um, visiting of the University of Minnesota Raptor Center as well as watching a science presentation from Professor Norm. And that's the end of my presentation for you guys.
Thank you. And you have to follow that.
I know.
All the time.
Every time, I should go first. I don't know, good job Alexis, well done, well done. Another great example of a Big Lake student right there. So yes, I've got a couple of things, I mentioned that I did meet with Wright Tech today. Just wanna let everybody know, they have their annual open house on April fourteenth. And it's from four to seven, I think it'd be really cool if you're interested in checking that out, but I started thinking about that. And I know we are actually due for, it's been a couple of years since we've had a meeting over there. So I'm actually gonna suggest or see what people think about.
A work session?
A work session, how about on April ninth? We have our work session over at Wright Tech, we could start with Brian and/or Sean giving us again, just a quick whip review, um, tour of the programs and you can kinda show what's going on. Was it last time, I think Brian was actually teaching a class, wasn't he?
Yeah.
And I think Sean, Brian was teaching and Sean kinda gave us a tour.
And then Minda gave us the start of MTSS.
Yes, at that night, it was, it was where it all began, right, Minda?
It was.
Yes, so, so and I'll remind people of that in the schedule down below, but if we could have that work session posted on April ninth at Wright Tech. And I'll make sure I get an address for you, Chelsea, if you haven't been there, so.
I'll probably just Google it anyway.
There you go, it's, yeah, it's, it's a pretty neat place and it's a great. It's a great, it's a great resource for uh, our students. But again, we'll be getting that tour, but I just wanna mention that they do have their open house on April fourteenth from four to seven, I do plan to swing by there. Also, on uh, April sixth, on that Sunday, we do, we have been invited to an Ice Hockey Association Focus Group. Gentlemen are here this evening. So I know that um, we don't typically like to have a quorum at those types of things, so I am curious to see uh, who I plan to attend. I know Minda's planning on attending and I know the invite has been sent out to principals, I haven't heard yet for sure who's gonna be attending from there. But could we maybe have two board members that might be interested, I know there was some interest expressed? So who would like to attend on that evening?
I can go.
Okay, Amber? Okay. Lynette? Okay, so we'll get you the information, it starts, um, and as I recall, there's like an open house type two o'clock start and then the focus group is at like at four, four thirty? Town hall. Yeah, so if we could plan on being at two o'clock at? Where are we meeting? Lupulin, okay, how could I forget that? So uh, in, in that community's m- meeting space there, I'm assuming, that half, that's really nice, yeah. So yeah, sounds great, so I appreciate it, Lynette, Amber, appreciate you attending. It's Sunday the sixth. April sixth. Alright, perfect. Ashley covered the legislative stuff quite nicely, so thank you for that, Ashley.
I did wanna add one thing though. They did, both house, or both chambers actually did pass through a bill to handle the sales tax thing. So again, so that we'd exempt the exemptions, so that we wouldn't have to go and ask for a specific exemption. It did pass out a committee to do a universal exemption for.
Oh.
For, yes, so for building supplies. So we have our bill that's been heard.
Yes.
And laid over, so there's a chance that that will get in.
There's always a chance.
There's always a chance. But there has actually been a, a statewide.
Some movement in the.
A statewide bill that was heard and laid over, so there's twice a chance.
Well, that's great, I mean, and honestly, I mean, as you recall, it's.
Better.
Absolutely, in between seven and eight hundred thousand dollars, that's, that means to Big Lake, so.
Correct, just this year. Or just for this project.
Yes.
Moving forward, if we could get the statewide one in place, then we wouldn't have to do it every time.
Helpful as well.
So anyway, just, I just thought that was.
Thank you, I did not hear that.
Yes, I have the numbers. Yes, I have the numbers somewhere, I emailed it to myself, so I'd remember, but.
That's great, thank you for sharing that. Also Alexis talked about STEM night, which was awesome, one thousand four hundred twenty-three, does that sound right? Just a big shout out, cuz this is from my round the district, by the way, Indy did a fantastic job of hosting and all the, from our own the district, really. If you have not been to uh, uh, STEM night, you should really come and check it out, it is quite the event, it's fantastic. So uh, good job to Principal Devo and, and her team, as well as all the people from around the district. Let's see, oh, Community Fair, on March fifteenth, we did host our annual Community Fair again. I appreciate um, those that could attend. We had about, a little over twelve hundred people show up again to that event, so it was really well attended, attended. That's a great event that continues to really bring the community together. So a big thank you goes out to obviously the chamber, just to, just to remind, this, the money that was essentially earned or raised by that event goes towards scholarships for our students. So that's how the chamber funds their scholarships that they give to our students, so that's a really cool thing as well. So a big shout out to Chamber Commerce as well as the Stephanie and her uh, crew with facilities and whatnot, as well as TJ's crew. And also, um, you maybe didn't know this, but the softball team helps to set up for that event and uh, as a fundraiser and the chamber basically pays them some dollars for that and the trap team helps to tear down. So it's really a group effort and um, what I, what I really liked this year, I was, I was um, tasked with being the emcee cuz I'm on the chamber board uh, for the different events and we had everything from jazz band played, they were awesome. And we had some dance groups and some different things, so it's really, if you, if you haven't been there before, please come and check it out, it's a pretty neat event and people really show up to it, so. It was really neat. Let's see here, literacy night, we already talked about, uh, Rise and Shine, uh, the youth associations came to provide activities for families, there were approximately fifty families. Even though it was a little bit lower, they all still had a great time, but. Yeah, you were there, okay, yeah, so it was, it was really neat. So and we also had a free childcare training that offered, uh, we offering hosted by our early childhood department. It actually helps childcare providers meet their CEU and training requirements for their licensure. So once again, really appreciate Stephanie and her team uh, providing that service to our community because that's really important to have, we're kinda all in this together, so really appreciate that, but I just want the board to be aware of that as well. As well as, we've got a couple of things coming up here with dates, I know I just want to, I'll cruise through these and once again, I'll send it out at, at my weekly update. But on April second, we have the Local Two Eighty Four Meet and Confer, so Lynette, that's at three thirty. So I think, I think Sue's been in communication with you about that. Blem? Yeah, and actually, actually our, our Blem group didn't, didn't have any issues, there were no issues to talk about, so Meet and Confer was canceled, that's been canceled. So um, there's. Wednesday the second, three thirty, correct. Yep. Come to the district office. There you go. You're welcome. So April third through the fourth, I just wanna remind people that the robotics competition uh, at Rivers Edge Center is taking place. I'm planning on attending and I think Minda is too, on Friday the fourth, I believe that's the date, um, to go check out our robotics team. I've never been down in the pit, you know what it's called?
Yeah.
I'll be in the pit, I get to wear some cool glasses.
Yes, safety glasses required.
Safety glasses required, I'm super excited to see it, so uh, I know that I, apparently the action really revs up around eleven thirty until two, is what I was told.
So yeah, on Friday, it'll still be qualifying matches.
Yeah.
Yeah, but that's when it starts to really get hot.
Really gets a little intense, the intense, I'm, I'm pumped, I've, I can't, I've never, like I said, I haven't seen it, so I'm excited to go, so. It, we, I will, I will, cuz I, that's, I'm really. It, we, I will, I will, because I, I, that's, I'm really excited to attend that, so.
They're excited you guys are going.
Yeah, and I, and I tried to get back to them right away and, and make sure that the kids knew I was going to. So, all right, uh, April ninth, we have a work session that is officially going to be at Wright Technical Center. So, uh, just to let you know a little closer for you, too, I suppose, right? Coming from Buffalo, there you go. So, uh, yes, and I'll send that reminder out as well in my, in my dates to remember as well. But, uh, uh, April eleventh, Ashley, we have SAF, formerly known as C, General Membership Meeting. Uh, and then April fourteenth, Wright Tech Open House, four to seven, April sixteenth, Policy Committee. Uh, we do have some items to discuss, I know I've been actually having Kim pull a few items for some policies, so we do have some to review this month. And then just a reminder, April seventeenth through the twenty-first, there's PD Day and no school for that Easter break. Uh, so, and thank goodness, it's designated as a weather makeup day, but. No weather makeup days this year, because we haven't had very many snow days. I know, I just, I just, I can't believe I said it, I said it all aloud, but we're good, we're good. And then, then finally, April twenty-third, we have our regular meeting again at six thirty. So that's kind of the month of April, I can't believe we're talking about April already, but.
So when the third winter strikes, it's your fault.
Ah, yeah, it is not my fault, so. That concludes my reporting, unless, of course, there are questions.
Any questions?
I will say at the Rise and Shine, um, the staff that was handling it, it was extremely well organized. You had kids running around like crazy all over the place that were there, and it wasn't like chaos, if that makes sense. It was, they had little stations to go work in and stuff, it was really well put together, I enjoyed it.
I was gonna add, um, on, I had to go find it, but on Facebook, they posted for the Big Lake Schools, um, just about eleven hours ago. Um, two Big Lake High School students were named finalists for the statewide Escape the Bay Challenge, Ally and Aleah, and they need your votes, so. I'll tell you, the link doesn't work up here, so click on the Google form, and then you can go ahead and vote for them. I already did, but I just thought I'd share that. Thing that's really cool, and the video that they made is, is fun to watch, too.
That's great. That's awesome.
The rest of us will have to vote.
Once again, I mean, we're doing some great stuff around here, really feel proud about, uh, and you all should too, because we're working really hard, so, that's all I have, Madam Chair.
Any other questions? I will make a motion to adjourn our regular meeting. Second by Nelson. Any other discussions? All in favor? I oppose, motion carries.